Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roque, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Okay, do we have any announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports?
I have some meetings to announce. The Beautification Commission will meet on Tuesday, January 5th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. The Historical Commission will meet on Tuesday, January 12th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. The Traffic Safety Committee will meet on Tuesday, January 12th at 6:30 PM here at City Hall. The Planning Commission meeting of January 5th and the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of January 5th have both been canceled.
Commissioner, answer.
I was wondering if we had the complete list of blight enforcement or code of ordinance enforcements?
Yes, in fact, I had an email drafted to you, but I didn't hit send before I left, when I went out of the office this afternoon, and you'll have it today.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else on the board? Okay, we do have a presentation tonight from the Beautification Commission, and it's our annual Snowflake Award, so I don't know who's doing it, but come forward.
My name is Kathy Rollerson, and I'm on the Beautification Committee along with Louise Lambert and Lisa Taylor, and we're here to give out our snowflake certificates of appreciation for your wonderful Christmas outside Christmas light display. And they're all appreciated by everyone, the mayor, the commissioners, and especially the people on your street, and then all of those that drive by. It's really appreciated how you take care to light up. I remember one time when my brothers and I were younger, my parents would drive by all through the streets of Mount Clemens and look at the lights. And one in particular, some here might remember, was on Crocker. It was on the north side of Crocker, and we would go by there, and the display of the lights was phenomenal. Every kind of creature that you could imagine was lit up. And the cars that would go up and down Crocker were going by really slow, and it was just, it was a wonderful time. So just know that you taking the time to Christmas up your residence really makes a difference to everyone. And so what we're going to do, the city, we've divided the city up into seven different sections, and we have a snowflake appreciation certificate for one in each of the seven sections. And also, we have a little Christmas snowflake award that we also present as a thank you also. So Louise, why don't you come up? So I'm going to call the names and give your, and give the address, if that's all right, and if you would just stand, and we'll hand you your beautiful certificate, and then also your snowflake award. So thank you. If you're here, George Convery at 155 Comet. And also William and Diana Cooper of 216 Wellington Crescent. Naomi Hammond, 40 inches. Charles and Jody Haskins of 20 Eastman. Polly Howzer of 93 Canfield called and said that she would not be able to make it. Also Valerie Stevens of 93 Jones Street. 93, mhm. And lastly Jeremy and Samantha Weber of 75 South Wilson. Okay, well, thank you again. It's been an honor.
Kathy? Are you going to stay for a while? I mean, they may come a little late, so just in case they come in, if they do come, we'll interrupt the meeting and give that to them.
And Alex, I'll take Polly's tour, I see her almost every day.
Also, you know where these people are, then?
Polly Howzer, yeah.
So if you just stay for a few minutes, or leave them with me, I mean, if they come, if you decide to go, just in case they come later.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I would like to move out, item 10B to 9D.
10 what?
10B.
10B.
To 9D.
Kay Roque.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Okay, public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule. So please come to the mic.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Dixon, 94 Park. I'm here in support of Mr. Ford. I know if you give him an opportunity to work with you on the city, I know he'll be a great help to you, and I know he'll do a good job. May God bless you and Happy New Year to each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Yes, as long as I'm up, I'll ask my questions. Now, my name's Rick Block, I live in Cambridge, 207 Cambridge. Got several questions, happens to be an item on your agenda tonight, something that you're being asked to approve. It's this contract for AKT Peerless. I looked through here, just because I've dealt with these things in the past in another lifetime, looking at some of the fees that are on here, I got a couple of questions about what these entail. First thing I noticed is that the date on this engineering services thing says January 2014. Does that mean that we're paying the same price we did three years ago? Or this is going to be the third year at the same price? Or is this a typo, and it should be changed? Maybe it's an old document that has different prices, I'm not sure which. Secondly, it gives a list of all the professional service fees, and everything's pretty much self-explanatory, service managers, project managers, this kind of specialist, that kind of specialist. But there's one on there that it doesn't define, or at least not that I'm really familiar with, principal environmental and energy service. It lists the man's name for that. He happens to be a principal. Doesn't say what he does, but his services are paid in kind. Not sure what that means in respect to this, but we pay the man $220 an hour. A little stiff, I think, but I don't know what, like I said, I don't know what he does. I know what an engineer does, I know what some of these other people do, but I don't know, I know what a principal is, but I don't know what a principal environment and energy service is, what does his job entail? And the last item that I had a question about was administrative support. Now, I'm assuming that administrative support is clerical-type things, typing up notes, typing up minutes, typing up the invoice that you get, whatever it is. $45 an hour seems quite a bit to pay someone who types.
Okay, I think we can answer a couple of your questions.
Yeah, relating to the cost, the cost is actually going to be down a little bit from prior years, while some service levels have actually increased, so it's overall, it's a pretty substantial decrease if it was an apples-to-apples comparison, but it's also some additional services are going to be performed by the company that's involved here. And the other thing that I wanted to point out about this is, this is a subcontractor basically to the city's environmental attorneys that are representing us on this, on this matter. So it's basically just to approve that relationship between the two of them, for them to continue to provide services to us. One of the things that's going to be updated a little better, or an added level of service, if you will, is there's a, an issue with a particular location, and they're going to do some design and specification work for that specific location that's part of our issue with this methane gas matter that's what's the subject of this contract. So they're going to do some additional work on that in terms of developing a design and specification for it, and then also following up on that design and specification contract that gets awarded ultimately. And I don't know if the city attorney has anything to add, looks like he might.
The 14th is a typo, I can tell you that. The contract, this is the same contract that Dickinson Wright, who is our environmental attorneys, have entered into with Peerless from the beginning of this project, which has been five, six years. And I'm sure the 14 is a typo, because each year we've had the same contract.
I assume that.
Right. Secondly, your question is to principal, under the listing of the rates that are being charged. Principal relates to one of the owners of AKT Peerless. I presume he's an environmental engineer, but that's what the term principal.
Well, one of the questions to that was the fact that they mentioned his name two or three times, and that he has been paid over $229 worth of work at $220 an hour, but, you know, I don't know what he does. I know what these other people do, but I'm not sure what he does, just because he owns a business doesn't necessarily entitle him $220 an hour, unless we know what he's doing.
Well, I would...
Do you know what he does?
No, that's why we have environmental attorneys. It's a pretty specialized area, and one of the things I'm sure that he provides is a relationship with the DEQ and the principals that they are dealing with at the state. But principal, it's not unusual, if you had a fee schedule from a law firm, that the partner's hourly rate would be higher than the associate's underneath them, and I think that's what it relates to. That's my guess.
And one more clarification, if I can, just to add on here. I mean, that's, that schedule that you're referring to is actually the fee schedule, and there might not have been a change since January of 2014. I don't know for sure that it's a typo, but the rest of the contract refers to calendar year 2016, the introduction refers to calendar year 2016. All the other dates are consistent with 2016, so the schedule that showed the cost basis for these different classifications within the firm was dated January 2014. That may be a typo, and maybe that it hasn't changed either.
Well, my question, is it a typo or has it not changed?
Right. I'm guessing that everything else, being consistent, it's either has not changed, or it's, it could be a typo at this point, I don't really know for sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was waiting, I didn't know that. Oh, go ahead.
My name is William Dozier. I live at 322 Howard Street. I've been here for at least 75 years. I'm here to support Bill Ford. I've known him since he was a young man. We have both been lifetimers at Mount Clemens. He's an even-minded person. He did a good access to this council. He knows a lot about the functions and what's been happening in the Mount Clemens area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Vernier, 65 Ludwick Street, Mount Clemens. I wasn't going to speak, but decided to now, and I don't know Mr. Ford, I'm sure he's a very fine man, but I do know Laura Fournier, and I do know that she has a lot of expertise that would be so valuable for the city and for this commission. And also, she's a very kind, very compassionate person, and has done a lot for this, for this city. And in fact, I'm going to hopefully recommend her for that special award, and I think there's still time. And I think you said the sixth, I'd like to check on that. But anyways...
Today, today was the deadline on that.
Today? Is it still okay tonight, or not?
At midnight.
That's fine. Okay.
4:30, I'm sorry, 4:30, because the office is closed at 4:30.
Okay.
I'm going by the clock.
Well, anyways, I just wanted to say how much I support her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa McGarretty, and I live at 19 Inches Street, and I just want you to know that I am in support of Bill Ford for the City of Mount Clemens Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, Gloria Heller, 260 Cass. First of all, good decision. Mr. Brown made sure the hydrant got painted. Of course, that cost me some money, because selective prosecution would have brought me a good chunk of money, but hey, if you want to finally do the right thing and decide that everybody has to be treated equally, hey, I'm in for that. It's a nice yellow color now. And incidentally, speaking of hydrants, we need to undo this blight throughout the city called these godforsaken art objects that used to be painted when Drager had that program going, "Please get the hydrants painted so that they look like hydrants, not..." Whatever. Okay, the biggie, and I hear everybody turning out for Bill Ford. I know Bill Ford, too, went to school with Bill Ford, he and I share, darn near share a birthday. Be a wonderful person to run in a regular election, but this is a very special case. I don't think people realize it's got nothing to do with anything everybody's been talking about. What this is, is finally the showdown between equal representation throughout the city or for the power to remain in the southwest quadrant. Now, the rumor, in fact, turns out to be fact, because I've been to two meetings now where the mayor does keep picking Bill Ford as her choice. That's fine. But that would make it a battle between southwest quadrant interests, represented by Dempsey influencing Ford. And I know, I understand Mr. Bunton had something to do with asking Bill to run, too, but he's influenced by the mayor as well, so that'd be six and a half dozen or another. At any rate, what I can tell you from years of watching is that the mayor would not be able to unduly influence females, it doesn't work for her. She influenced Drager, she's been trying to influence Mr. Bunton. Mr. Bunton's a real strong person, he's resisting her all, all the way. I don't know what Mr. Ford would do, probably go crazy. Let's save him for regular election. Now, I encourage you, and you, and you to stick it out, stay with your three votes for Laura Fournier. It's going to force an election, that's okay. It won't be a special election, we're not going to have to pay for it, because it's too late for the special election. It'll be in August, and that'll mean this body isn't going to do much between Mount and August, but you know, doing nothing is better than continuing to do the wrong thing, which is what would happen if you put the gridlock so that you have Bunton, Dempsey, Hill, and Ford. You don't want that for the weighted gridlock. So let's hold on, force it to an election, and give the people their say. And if we elect Bill Ford as a populist, fine, but it'd be kind of foolish when you got somebody with her expertise and her background, her degree, the credentials she's coming forward with, and certainly you need somebody on this commission, and I can tell you that, because I've watched it for years. You guys don't know from Shinola about money most of the time. So it might be helpful to have a CPA seated, especially since her license is under the gun.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Dolores Gossini at 250 Euclid, completely different subject. I seem to have private war with our rubbish pickup, Rizzo Brothers. My living room faces the street, and I heard a big noise the other day. They take the blue trash barrels, they throw it on a truck, it does not go in a truck, it lands on the ground, and they walk away. Well, I was going out there and start howling at them, but I had my pajamas on. So I'm waited, I figured they'll come back and sweep it up. There's plastic bottles, bags, rubbish, paper stuff from the blue dumpster. So I called the city, and she says, "Okay, I'll send them back." I had to go for my appointment, I came back three hours later, and I'm pulling my driveway, I said, "Gee, they cleaned it up." And as I pulled in the driveway, I looked, they didn't clean it up, it blew all over. Now, we've had this problem continuously, and I can remember just before I had my knee surgery in June, and I was like, you know, I was walking with a cane, it's hard to do, I had to go out and sweep up the street, which contained broken bottles. And I figured I swept it all up, and I'm, it's hard to walk with a cane, you know that, and with the broom. And I pulled out the drive an hour or two later, I got a glass in my tire, brand-new tires that I didn't have on the car for two weeks. It was a piece of glass, and I'm like, "How am I going to prove that Rizzo is that's some nurse careless?" And I said, "I can't." But I am really getting sick and tired of picking up this trash. And I know the contract came up last year, they probably got an increase, but you know what you did, you gave them an increase, but we're paying for it. We're paying more, 3% more taxes, and I figured we're getting a less service. You give someone a job in your office, and you give them a pay raise, and they slack on the work, you get rid of them. So you got to watch, I know you do watch, who you give these increases to, make sure they're doing the job. I think they're doing less. I put this complaint on my Kendrick area Facebook, I must have had 30 hits come back saying, "Oh yeah, my street, too. Oh yeah, they did to me. Yep, this happens all the time." So it's not just me, it's at least 70% of the neighborhood. So please do something with the rubbish pickup. I don't think we should, otherwise, forget the blue dumpsters, put everything in one. Because those dumpsters, they just pick it up, and they just hit it, and it drops on the, on the street, and the dumpster lays there, because he misses the sidewalk, and they drive away. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Riley Bunton. I reside at 54 West Brightmar Place in Mount Clemens, and I am here in support of William Ford and his aspirations to become a city councilman. He's an outstanding human being and person, and he will be an asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Joe Harrington. I live at 152 Court Street. I, like the lady here, wasn't going to say anything, but after listening, in my honesty, just my opinion, I thought there were two, I believe there are two candidates more qualified than Bill Sonny Ford, but in all fairness, I would recommend him for the simple reason that you look at this board, the demographics, where you live, your income, where you come from, it's well-represented. There's a district, there's a demographic, there's a class, there's a race of people that's not well-represented. And by electing Bill Ford, it would make, it would represent more of all of the citizens of Mount Clemens. Now, there's a big segment that is well-represented by y'all, and there's one segment that is not represented at all. Bill would bring that to you, and he's an honest man. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Honorable mayor, my name is Thomas Jake Lee. I live at 49 Rathbone Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. And I would first give you credence, I like the way the guidelines are set up for the public participation, but I might have to go back and look at some of the words, some of the meanings of some of these words, it seemed like they don't stand. Any rate, I'm here tonight, I have a number of things going on in the city, but to recommend William Ford for this vacant seat. I, myself, only been in Mount Clemens about 18 years, and moving to a new place, I've always liked to watch the people, just know what's going on around me and in the neighborhood. And I have noticed Mr. Ford, because staying next door to relatives, and see him coming and going, he always had like a word of wisdom. He takes care of business, because he takes care of business in some areas where I, I don't say I work, but where I be at, and I notice that he takes, takes care of business. My wife wanted to be here, she wanted to tell me, because basically what I have to do is listen in interviews, because I haven't been here for such a long time, so I like to observe. My wife's telling me she's known him for over 40 years, and through my interviews, I find that he has been, had education, not just the high school here, but outside of the state, just through my interviews. Also, I noticed that he speaks. When a person speaks, it tells a lot, and my grandmother taught me that, that's the reason why I always speak. Person don't speak to you, it can't make eye contact, there's something going on within that person, I can't say what it is. But he speaks with eye contact. He also is well-spoken of in the community. There are other businessmen in the community that I've run into, that I was going to have do business for me, but they're not well-spoken of. And I looked at some of their work, it's not there. He takes care of business. Evidently, his father took care of business, and that's what I hear, I can only give it on a hear thing. His children, or his siblings went to school with my wife's children, and I watch his family, too, because they all reflect him, I believe, they all carry themselves well. Also, I hear Mr. Harrison, Harrington make a statement there, and that which I really didn't think too much of that, but definitely the representation, something, there's something need to be talked of also. But I like to say that I'm proud to recommend Mr. William Ford to you, and I've always found his character and his manner very satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Like everybody else, I said I wasn't going to get up and say anything, I would leave it to everybody else. As the gentleman two back stated, once I said, "Once this election was over..."
I'm sorry.
Oh, Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. As I stated before, once the election is over, this community is supposed to be represented by everybody. But as the young man stated before, east, northeast, and southeast of Grashit is not represented in a lot of things. The streets are not done, you know, unless somebody like me gives up and raises a whole bunch of hell about something here and something there, but I'm not the only voice, and trying to get the community to step up. They said nobody's doing anything. Call your city commissioners, they're not going to do anything. The only parts of this city that gets represented is northwest, southwest, that has to change. I understand Mrs. Fournier, she has a massive background. There are a lot of committees that you guys can appoint her to that would be an asset to this city, but this seat here is only vacant until for six, seven, what, eight, nine more months, or whatever. Let's appoint somebody the rest, I don't know how long it is. But I support. This young man has been to every city commission meeting since Carter's got liver pills. He's always here, he's always bringing up issues, he's always representing. I stand in support of Mr. Ford, having known him a whole lifetime, he's way younger than I am, but I knew his grandfather, and his grandfather and father-in-law raised him well. So he would be an asset to southeast and northeast parts of Grashit. Thank you. And to the whole city, which he also speaks about and represents as well now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sue Dunsmore, and I live at 60 Ludwick. I'm here to represent Laura Fournier, of course, and I just wanted to say that she has tried immensely, and I think all of Mount Clemens have tried to improve it, and I think that she would be a really good commissioner, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just two things. Update on that blighted property at northbound Grashit and Robertson. City administration has set a meeting for the first week of January with the property owner to discuss the issues associated with this property, and we will update after that meeting takes place as to where we're going from there. Secondly, sidewalk, street stoplight inquiry. As a reminder, city commission agreed to fund $50,000 in fiscal year 2016 to cover costs associated with stepped-up enforcement of sidewalk ordinances and sidewalk issues. Administration split this funding level into two phases of action, one during the fall of 2015, and then one in the spring of 2016. This funding is going to basically be designed to do two things, address the sidewalk issues that will be funded by the, or will be handled by the work that's funded, and then secondly, allow an evaluation by city administration as to how that initial step towards looking at sidewalks and addressing sidewalks works out, as the city commission will then have an opportunity to decide to establish a long-run systematic plan to address sidewalk issues across the city, as in a formal sidewalk program. There was one other thing that was referenced by that resident that talked about the sidewalks, and that was related to a traffic signal that was requested for North Avenue at Elizabeth, and that's been referred to the DPS. It's my understanding that that received a lot of attention many years ago, probably going back to 20, 25 years ago, to discuss a need for a street light or a stoplight at that location, and... a need for a street light or a stoplight at that, uh, location. And, um, we're going to revisit that. Uh, part of the issue in the past was right of way issues and things like that that would have been involved. And, uh, we're going to take a look at whether new technology and, and stoplights will allow, um, something like that to be addressed uh, in a way that wouldn't require the right of way issues, uh, to be addressed that were in place in the past. Uh, so the DPS is going to take another look at that and revisit that matter, and we'll report back once we get some more information. And, um, that's all I have this evening.
Questions? All righty. Approval of the minutes from previous meetings. Need a motion?
Move to approve the minutes. Uh, let's just center point first, regular meeting.
Support.
At the work, so we have a work session.
And the work session.
And the work session.
And the work session, then. Yes.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, general business, nine A, public hearing and action on a request to vacate a portion of a public alley. This is a public hearing. Um, so with that, we need to have a motion.
Motion to open the public hearing for the request to consider a request to vacate portions of an alley south of Cass Avenue between South Wilson and Maras. Support.
Okay, you may address this. Oh, well, I mean.
That's not too much.
You better explain what they're.
Yeah, all right. Uh, this date has been set for a public hearing to consider a request from the property owner of two forty-nine Cass Avenue to vacate two areas of alleys located adjacent to their property between South Wilson and Maras, south of Cass. A notice of the public hearing appeared in the December twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen edition of the McComb Daily and was mailed to all affected property owners and utility companies. A copy of the request is enclosed with a map and the necessary resolution. So that's a little bit of information.
Public hearing is open. If there's anybody you'd like to address this.
Good evening. My name is Wes Hellner. I live at one twenty-six South Highland, and I'm the owner of the property at fifteen South Wilson, which is adjacent to the commercial property. Um, I've had conversations with the new owner, and basically, I think we can come to some type of an agreement, what's going to happen once that property gets vacated, which I do think in the end only makes sense to vacate it because it's a piece of property that's an alley there, which from my experience, almost no one in the world knew was an alley for the last fifty years. It's actually a driveway, it's used as a driveway for my rental right now. Uh, and actually, that property, that alley goes back and encompasses some of the new owner's, uh, parking lot in the back. So, uh, my fear originally was that there was going to be this vacation of the alley and what exactly would happen. I've had a little talk with the city attorney about that, too. Uh, but anyways, I do think the property should be vacated. The alley should be vacated. Uh, my only concern is that it seems that there's a little bit of confusion, not from our, the owner's standpoint, but what happens when these properties get vacated. And I know there's been some changes, uh, in what happens when you do vacate a property as to ownership of that alley, or non-ownership now as it is. Uh, but it was just a question for future reference, for future people, that this may come up, that there's a little more, some type of standard set up on what exactly is happening. And maybe this is mine, it, this alley is a little bit unusual, uh, and maybe it's a little different than other alleys. But, uh, it's, it just seems to me, if you had a process, a little better process set up that could advise people what happens when these alleys get vacated, it would just serve the next people that turn up in this. But in the end, uh, I think that alley should be vacated, and I think, uh, with the owner of the other property, we can work out some mutual agreement on it. Thank you.
Okay.
My first question is.
Name.
Is a public hearing, and does that include everybody in the city, or does that only include the owner's property owners?
We all know who you are, but for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gloria Hallen, two six zero Cass.
Thank you.
Anybody can.
Okay. Since it's right across from me and would impact me, but what goes on there, I agree with Wes. You say vacate an alley, I mean, people are going, duh, you know, they're not sure what will be different once it's vacated as opposed to what's going on there now. I do know that for a while, for drug activity on Maras, and maybe still, it's been a little bit of a hotbed, at least the portion that goes down and that T intersects. And I'm always glad when alleys are vacated, but it might help if there was an explanation of what vacate means. And in this specific case, how it would be different once vacated as opposed to what it is now. But I don't think we should stand in a property owner's way. He's trying to do a good job, and that alley has been a, a hotbed.
Anyone else?
George Gemmer, one thirty-two High Street. Uh, when I moved in to one thirty-two High Street, uh, there was an alley behind my house, and there was a vacated alley on the west side of my house. The vacated part on the west side had an encroachment of a fence that originally followed a shrub line. And it was over on my property, about a hundred and twenty feet worth of, uh, land. I think Mr. Murray was momentarily involved in that. We can discuss that another time, maybe, but that cost me seven thousand dollars to recoup that hundred and twenty square feet of property. So, uh, and, uh, that was divided. The homeowner that I bought the house from, she gave seven feet, or seventeen feet or something, to the property owner next door, and she only took three feet of it. So that was kind of a bummer. But the alley behind the house was, uh, used for garbage pickup back when I first moved in. And that was nice. Everybody took care of the alley. And it seemed to be reasonably clean and, and, uh, wasn't really a problem. But when the city moved to the garbage pickup in front of the house, nobody took care of the alley in the back. And it was a thoroughfare for people dropping off what they stole and picking up something new quite often. And a lot of glass bottles broken all over the place. It was just a mess. And so when, uh, the city allowed us to claim that or use that property, we, we divided the property up equally with the houses behind us. And, and, uh, that is known as abeasement. You can't build on it. Uh, the, the city can do what they want to with it if they, if they ever want to do something again with it. But, uh, we can use it for landscaping and, and keep it nice if we want to. So that was nice. So that kind of is, gives you the dichotomy between the two affairs that go on with breaking up a, or vacating an alley, the city vacating an alley. A gentleman over there might have a problem with it, with his driveway, where it being used as a driveway to his garage. These things can generally be worked out. Luckily, on High Street, nobody was using it that way. Alley across the street, or the partial alley across the street. There's a number of people using the alley to get to, uh, their, their garages with. Well, that could be a problem there. But to me, I loved getting, when the city turned it over to us, and we could get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, need a motion to close the public hearing first.
Oh. Uh, close the public hearing for request to consider a request, a lot of requests.
Yes.
To vacate portions of a public alley south of Cass Avenue between South Wilson and Maras. Support.
Okay. Now, any questions?
You know, originally, I voted no on this because although, you know, the, we have a letter from, um, the, uh, group that wants to build there, that purchased the new property. Um, it said that nobody was using that alley. And yet, in my pictures, and when I drove by, um, somebody was parked there. And so I just want to say that I'm very thankful that the homeowner came today to explain that he's working out a, you know, so, uh, an, an arrangement with the, the business property owner, and that he is comfortable with vacating the alley, because otherwise, um, I would have had to go with the residents' needs again. So thank you for coming. Thank you for explaining that. Um, and I will be changing my vote.
Anyone else?
Um, I'd kind of like to ditto what Denise said. Um, I do think it's unfortunate that the, that the city cannot deed alleys to people anymore when it's closed. I mean, because many people were happy to get half of an alley, but, um, that the city can't do that anymore. According to our city attorney, people have to go to circuit court and, um, claim, or try and get circuit court to approve their ownership of the property. So I really, uh, commend Mr. Hellner for meeting with the other property owner and working out an arrangement. I think that was a very intelligent thing to do.
Anyone else? Yes.
Just, just to clarify, the city can vacate the alley. The action of the city does not eliminate the right of way described. And so it does not revert ownership to the abutting property owners. But the city can vacate the alley, and what that means is that the public use of the right of way is eliminated. However, the other members, lot owners in a subdivision, our action does not affect what rights they may have in that alley. That's the whole point of why we can't, in our resolution.
Crazy.
Convey title to the abutting property owners. You can only get title through circuit court.
Anyone else?
And there's a state statute that spells that out.
I understand that.
If there's an, if there's a blight issue, or, you know, somebody puts, abandons a car there, let's say, you know, and, maybe it's not in, an action taken by the, the property adjacent, but let's just say somebody abandons the car, whatever. Whose responsibility is it?
Well, it's, it, the, the city technically, by vacating the alley, has divested itself of stewardship over the public right of way. And it reverts to the subdivision. This particular property is in the Cass subdivision. So theoretically, it would be the responsibility of all the lot owners in the Cass subdivision, because it becomes a private right of way after it's vacated by, by the city. But nothing stops the homeowners. It's confusing, and they never used to enforce this. But now, the Office of Land Survey and Remuneration, and that's where you got to mail your resolution to. And the last one we did, they mailed back to us and said, "We won't accept it because you have language in there vesting title, and you're not entitled to do that." And so that's why we're, we are where we are. As a practical matter, it will stay the way it's been for the last forty or fifty years. Uh, you know, I mean, uh, and there's nothing stopping the property owners, if they, if they want to acquire title, from starting a circuit court action. They got to give notice to, to, uh, property within three hundred feet of them. They have to give notice to the municipality. The municipality adopts a resolution vacating, and then the court, assuming there's no objections from other property owners, because you could have objections if you had, uh, something where somebody uses it for their ingress and egress. Uh, you know, I mean, you could possibly have objections. If there are none, then the court, in this situation, would give ten feet to Mr. Hellner, ten feet to the Cass Avenue property. And, and they would then record that judgment, and that would give them title to that property. So that's the distinction.
So if this summer, no one mows that lawn?
There's no lawn there.
Wow.
It's all mud. I drove it.
Right.
It's all mud. My car is one.
See what I'm saying? Okay, so.
Uh, the city, I mean, Jeff can correct me. The city hasn't been mowing the lawn for the last forty years. The city hasn't been doing anything on that alley. Uh, you know.
Okay.
And I, I suppose that if, if something did happen, A, if it were blighted and a blight would be, ordinance would be issued to whoever they thought was blighting it, uh, uh, and the city probably would take care of the blight if they couldn't, uh, you know, find the responsible party.
Is it too late for him to comment?
I just wanted to make a fast comment. It's just, it's more of a, it's more.
It's closed, but.
Go ahead.
There's a head screw there that I've remained in for twenty years, and I got blighted one time when I was on vacation. It was going very fast in the spring, and I called the city, because I knew that one day. And they said, "That's your property. You have to take care of that blight of it." So I, I said.
Okay. All being said, I'm about taking role on this one.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
It was in the whole, the whole thing. Okay. Okay. Nine B, commission appointment to city commissioner. Need a motion? I guess we don't need a motion. I will pass them out. Oh, everybody has one already. Oh, I thought these were supposed to be.
Those are yours.
They're all fine. Okay, folks.
Sorry. Commissioner Campbell voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Hill voted for William Ford. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Menser voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Button voted for William Ford. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. We have three and three.
I'll try again.
No, I'm sorry. Keep on guessing. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Hill voted for William Ford. Commissioner Campbell voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Button voted for William Ford. Commissioner Menser voted for Laura Fournier.
Oh, we have to sign it.
There you go. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. Three and three.
Okay, do we go around again, or is this it?
I don't see the point of going around again.
Okay. All right, then. We are done, and it will go to an election in August.
Do we get the comment?
Okay. Uh, commissioner comments, you can, at that time, if you can. Nine C, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
I move to approve, uh, purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, nine D is the request, uh, approval of agreement with AKT Peerless for environmental consulting services. I need a motion.
I move to approve Dickinson Wright P L L C retaining of AKT Peerless to provide professional consulting services on the city's behalf for calendar year twenty sixteen pursuant to the attached environmental services agreement.
Support.
Support.
Commissioner Mensor?
Um, I just had a couple of questions. I wondered how much longer this monitoring is going to go on. Let me jump.
As long as the.
As long as there's methane.
We have to do it.
Okay. Um, and I noticed that the difference in this contract between the one for fifteen, it's, it's really, it's only a hundred bucks. But, the task list has changed from quarterly things to biannual. Biannual technical advisory meetings, biannual reports, and they used to be quarterly. So, do these biannual reports and meetings still meet the DEQ requirements?
Oh, I'm sure they do. We don't. Dickinson Wright is our environmental attorneys. They specialize in this area. Uh, I am sure what they are proposing is as directed by the DEQ. They are the people meeting with the DEQ, along with Peerless, and then they advise us as to what occurs. So, uh, I, I have to assume that the DE, they've been somewhat successful in getting the DEQ to back off a little bit, from quarterly to biannually. They, they have kept the DEQ, my understanding, from imposing much greater requirements. As, there were a number of things they could've done, which could've been much more costly. So, I mean, I think we have to rely upon Dickinson Wright to be doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay. And, um, like our resident, I just, on the fee schedule, I just, to charge us cost, plus fifteen percent for things like meals, lodging, and postage, is just unconscionable.
It's very standard.
I know.
I'm sure the county contracts with people have the same language in it. I, it's very, very standard.
I just, uh.
Dickinson Wright is charging us much more than the principal of AKT Peerless. So, you know.
Well, I couldn't let that, leave that go unsaid. Wait.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
If I might just add to this. I mean, I know that there's a services agreement, and it has a list of all those expenses in there, but if you look at the price, they, they gave us a proposal with the scope of work. We've never exceeded that expense that they told us that we're going to, going to do based upon this scope of work. I know that there's this whole list of all these principal engineers and all of this, but it, it doesn't mean that we're actually paying that price. We're, we're paying for a specific scope of work by AKT Peerless, and it's been set at an amount.
That's their standard, probably, menu for every contract. They have to put down everybody that.
Their, their contract is for a total not to exceed price of thirty-three, six fifty for basic services. The listing, as Jeff indicated, is if they go beyond basic services, that's how they're gonna bill you.
But, we've never. And how long have we been with them? How long have we been?
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It's about eight, not eight, eight years that we've had this methane issue.
And so, is there no, like, shelf life on this methane? I mean, it could go on for a hundred years, and next year?
Yeah, because it's just the decaying of the garbage.
Right. It's just decaying, the garbage that was left there years and years and years and years ago. But, there's not enough methane for us to capture it, to do anything with. That's the other problem. That's the thing. Okay, I'm good. Okay, roll call.
Crop?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, remainder of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Mensor?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
City managers report?
She's on it?
Yes, she's approving the consent agenda.
I know.
Doesn't matter. Okay. City managers report?
Have nothing for this week with the short work week that we experienced because of the holidays. It's a chance to get out of here a little sooner.
Commissioners? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I have two questions. Has a meeting been arranged with the Sheriff's Department regarding the gas station situation?
The reference, the, the first step in that process has been taken, yes.
Okay. And, uh, has a couple residents asked me, the newspapers that are delivered, that are thrown, they were ending up on the street. And we keep getting asked that question, "That's not delivering papers, it's littering." So, is anything ever gonna become of that?
We presented an ordinance last year that would have restricted it, but this commission decided not to approve that ordinance. It can be brought again.
Okay, well, we need to.
We presented one last year.
Okay, well, we need, that needs to be brought up again, so we can. And then the last one. I wanted to say that regarding the vote on the commission seat, I sent letters to the candidates, to their house, explaining why I voted the way I did. Also, with regards to representation of the city, uh, when I had a bike, unfortunately was ripped off from my back porch, I drove around the entire city all the time, talking to people. So, I'm hoping that I do represent everybody, and not just a quadrant of the city. And when I was elected, I was elected to represent everybody, so that's what I'd like to say, that I did go around talking to everybody as much as I could, and when I got a bike to replace the one, I hope to continue to do the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
I'd like to wish everybody a very Happy New Year, and, um, I wanted to mention the fireworks on New Year's Eve, they were spectacular. Absolutely spectacular. So, thanks to all the people that supported that effort. Um, I also wanna say a word of thanks to John's Family Grill, who had the free brunch, but, um, were, were happy to take donations from people. And I'm very happy to say that people were incredibly generous, and, uh, they collected just under three thousand dollars, which, um, they divided between two churches, St. Louis and First United Methodist Church. And, uh, so, being a member of First United Methodist Church, we are extremely grateful, because we are hosting the Warming Center for eleven days. Uh, it started last Wednesday, and it goes until a week from yesterday. Um, so, anyway, we, we appreciate the generosity of everybody, and very much appreciate John's Family Grill. Congratulations to everybody who received a snowflake award. Um, as you said, I think that everybody in the city appreciates all the decorating that people do. And I said to someone earlier, every year, I plan to do more and end up doing less. I appreciate everybody else's decorations. And I, I commend the Beautification Committee for recognizing people on their efforts. I, I think it's very motivating to be recognized for your efforts, and, um, so thank you for doing that. Regarding the city commission's inability to select an appointment for the vacant seat on the commission, I really am very disappointed that we were not able to get four votes for any one individual, especially considering that they were all good candidates. But, what I find even more disappointing is assumptions that some people made about why individual commissioners or the mayor voted the way we did. Some of the comments I heard were frankly, kind of insulting. I personally did not vote against anyone. I voted for the person that I felt would be the best representative at this time. However, since the commission could not agree, the choice will be made by the citizens, and that may be the best thing in the long run. Uh, I want to thank Commissioner Crop for being willing to be our delegate to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and to Commissioner Mensor for agreeing to be the alternate delegate. That's something we voted for in the consent agenda. This is a time and travel commitment from both of you, and I sincerely appreciate it. Uh, the BCA still has Mount Clemens calendars for sale, so don't miss getting yours, just ten dollars. You can contact me, or you can contact Marty Ellison, or they've also been on sale at Max and Ali's and at the Art Center, so, um, don't miss seeing some beautiful Mount Clemens homes. And, um, lastly, here is some Facebook wisdom appropriate for the new year. Even though there are days I wish I could change some things that happened in the past, there is a reason the rearview mirror is so small and the windshield is so big. Where you are headed is much more important than what you have left behind. And with that, I will say, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Crop?
Um, I have a question to start off with. In our last, to the city manager, um, in our, in the last meeting, you said that you were, um, planning to have a meeting with the homeowner, I'm sorry, the owners of the house on Robertson and Northbound Grashit. Did I miss that in the report?
Yeah, in the report, it's scheduled for this week.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll have something to report after that meeting, hopefully.
Okay.
The church?
Right. Um, I, to say, I'm disappointed about the appointment, of course, is an understatement. Uh, I think we had five incredible candidates. Um, I encourage all of them to run, and I, too, found it, um, not insulting, but I find it interesting that the main issue is a quadrant issue, um, and yet, from that quadrant, or from that demographic, or from that race, whichever you choose to say, it was not represented in either election, which every person of the city can, and do, can do. And it doesn't cost them anything to put their name in the, in the, in the running. And, so I hope that the passion that was here tonight, that wanted that candidate from that area, I hope that they encourage Mr. Ford to run, or more people to run, because the more interest in the commission, the better. And that being said, my other comments that I actually prepared for tonight, um, yeah. Um, I believe wholeheartedly that anyone serving on the city commission should be dedicated, willing to learn, bring fresh ideas, and their life perspectives to the table. This commission advertised that they want people to volunteer their time and serve their community. They want people who have ideas to better our city. But I have come to believe that maybe we don't really mean that. Instead, we want someone who will have the same ideas as this commission, who will always agree with this commission, and who won't rock the boat. I will not compromise my integrity or reputation to become a yes person or a paper pusher, and I certainly won't stop asking questions, or bring ideas to the table. So, thinking differently is not the enemy. It's not going to rock this ship, and it's not the wild card. So, unless we stop thinking different is a threat to our city, and start listening to others, we will continue to change nothing. That's all I have.
Commissioner Mensor?
I have three things, um, also for the city manager. Number one, um, I have been, uh, I have talked to several residents on Barber Street. We'd like somebody to take a look at having a speed bump come out of Shadyside Park. There's a incl, you know, kind of an incline as people come up out of the park, and they're at the bottom on that parking lot, they're gunning their engines, and they're shooting up over that, and right onto Barbara, and there is a home, I think, two houses off the park property with small children, and there are several homeowners in that area that are really worried about the speed of the drivers coming out of the park. So, let's see if we can look at a, a speed bump coming out of Shadyside. I was contacted by a couple of people, and I did have a conversation with Commissioner Campbell about our cable channel. Um, for some reason, uh, people have been unable to view the, uh, commission meetings, and when Commissioner Campbell checked it, um, there was no sound to, you know, the parade. So, I'm thinking something's going on with the cable channel. I don't have cable at home, um, so, uh, you know, somebody else is gonna have to look into that. Um, and number three, the trash. I, I, you're right about the trash coming out of the, you know, the garbage trucks. Um, somehow, i- in the wind vortex on my street, I find newspapers plastered against the side of my house, and, and various other pieces of garbage also. So, back in March, when we approved the Rizzo contract, there was not an increase, they held the price the same. But, I brought up the fact that I wanted cans, garbage cans, and that did not pass that commission at that time. So, hopefully, when we look at this again this spring, or this summer, if that contract's up, we will talk about cans, and maybe that will help contain some of that. Um, the Mount Clemens High School Robotics Club is in need of mentors and money. Um, there is a competition on Jan. ninth this week, uh, and the last week of March against other local high schools. Um, if you can help with either mentoring the robotics team, or you'd like to give them a donation, you can call Martha Fisher. She is the mother of one of the students who, who participate for Mount Clemens High on the, uh, the robotics team, at five eight six, two one two, three, two two eight. I'd like to say congratulations to Cameron Rucks, who was featured in a Macomb Daily story about addictions and recovery, and he will be featured in the 2016 Faces of Recovery Calendar put out by CARE in the Henry Ford Macomb Hospital. Thank you for sharing your personal message of hope and encouragement, and good luck to you. Uh, I would also like to thank our legislators, who have, in my opinion, have finally done something right. Uh, they approved a bill that requires the State Historic Preservation Office to review any planned changes to historic sites owned, financed, or owned by the DDAs. Um, this legislation will help protect the Crocker House and the Grand Trunk Railroad Station here in our own city. In keeping with my tradition, um, where I have been in the city for the month of December, last month, I mentioned to you that I had been to Artist's Music, and I bought two slide whistles for my niece and nephew, with the sole purpose to drive my brother insane. That has worked, and I have gone back now to Artist's and got another slide whistle for my other brother's three-year-old, and they have a merry little band going now at my dad and stepmother's house. So, um, the entire family is appreciating that, and cursing me, too. Um, I've been to Bass City, I've been to Three Blind Mice. Um, I went to the magic shop, the ABC Magic Shop, and I bought a kit for one of my nephews. Um, it came in a ma, in a hat, a top hat, and it came with a cape, and several tricks. Well, you know, the tricks were great, but that cape was fought over on Christmas Day by all of the children who thought that it was only for superheroes. I don't know that any magic will ever be performed, but that cape was almost ripped to shreds by them fighting over who was going to wear it and jump off the couch with it. Um, I actually stopped into Paperback Writers. Um, I think I've told you guys before, that they will order books for you, they will call, if you tell them what books you're looking for, they will call you and tell you when they're in. And, um, I didn't buy anything, but I kinda looked around Weirdsville, and I'd like to say hello to our proprietors right here. Please stop in their shop, it's great. She has ideas for books that I gave as gifts. Um, one that I promised I was gonna give as a gift, a book on Michigan fauna, and, um, I kept it. I did not give it to my friend. Um, I've been to Orleans, and you guys all know my downfall, I went to Champagne Chocolates. Yes, I did. And, um, maybe Brian knows, but we have the name, uh, there's a brand-new coffee shop in the Cherry Street Mall. Please stop in. Give our, give our local businesses some assistance. What's it called?
Mean Ha.
Mean Ha? There you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Button?
French, that'll help, because your employee that works there always speaks French.
Great. Perfect. And as far as.
I'm sorry, I thought you.
Oh, no, you know me, I ramble. Um, as far as the commission seat, I spoke about, we have, we've all spoken about it. And, I am thrilled that we have as many candidates as we do for this seat. There are a couple people that I personally encourage to seek this seat. I think all of the candidates had, so, have unique skills and abilities, and this has been a, a very tough thing. But as Commissioner Crop said, or Commissioner Hill said, we're not voting against somebody. Everyone has a unique skill, everyone ha, will. Everyone has a unique skill, everyone will bring value to this commission. But in making a decision for what I personally think the city needs, and what will serve the city the best, is the only thing that I'm following. Not a tenant, not a quadrant, who will serve the city at this point in history the best? And my thing is, is that because we danced around the edges of an emergency financial manager, because we've danced, you know, we, the citizens were good enough to pass the charter amendment, because the finances of the city are still on a shaky ground, because we have a brand-new finance director that I hope is taking us in some, you know, some new direction, that will be able to see a five-year capital plan and a five-to-10-year projected budget, I'm looking for somebody at this point that has financial experience. It's not a vote against somebody, it's not a vote specifically for a person, it's for a skill that I think the city needs at this point. So again, you know, to echo the rest of the commission, please, stay involved. And there are some of you that actually I have some ideas for, that where you can help the city succeed on committees, and on special events, I think, that are coming up. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your interest, and I encourage you in 2017, run against me, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Bunton.
I'm done. Want to make sure. Again, we attempted to select a replacement for our city commissioner's seat that Gary Blash vacated, unfortunately, but we were not able to come to a conclusion. So this speaks for the fact that both candidates that were being voted upon were very qualified people. So I have no problem with that. I did encourage Bill Ford to run, and I'm not going to dance around that. I did encourage him to run. He has attended city commission meetings for the entire time that I've been here, and he was here before that as well. So he has been consistently interested in what goes on in the city of Mount Clemens. I have no problem. I think that Ms. Fordyear is a very qualified person, and I would love to see her run. I told her personally that I'd like to see her on the commission at one point in time, and I thoroughly agree with that. But I think that Bill Ford would do a good job at this right now. But I encourage that all of the people who expressed an interest in the position to run for the election, let the people decide. This election will be open to anyone, anyone that's interested in serving the city. So any of you who are sitting out there and saying, well, you know, they got their minds made up for them, well, you know, the community will decide just who it is that they want to see in this position, and then after that, there will be an election, at which point there could be as many as two seats or, that are being vacated, as well as the fact that anybody's seat can be taken by popular vote. So I encourage you, stay involved, stay busy with the city, run for office. I would like to wish everyone a safe and prosperous Happy New Year. For those of you who are looking forward to winter, I think it finally came. You may be snowbound shortly, but that's part of winter. So if you like to ski, and ice skate, and all the other good things, hockey on the ice, it's coming. Congratulations to the Snowflake Award winners. I love it when you help keep the city beautiful like that. You know, I think somebody mentioned that when they were kids, they drove around. Well, I guess my wife and I are still kids, because that's what we did. We drove around the city and looked at the lights, and, you know, it's a great entertainment, and we encourage you all to do that. But we encourage you all to also participate, I mean, throw up a few lights. Sometimes we go a little crazy at our house, it's seven or so Christmas trees, but that's a different story. I shouldn't say that, she's in the audience. Moving right along.
How many did you put up?
I was going to say, oh, you got the look!
Want to congratulate the DDA and all who were involved with the fireworks, they were awesome. I cheated, though. I looked at them from my house window as opposed to downtown, but they were just awesome, and I want to encourage you to keep that going. That has to become a tradition in the city of Mount Clemens, and keep it. Okay, I'm going to just touch on this one, and I'll move on. As far as the finances concerned, I understand, and I do believe that Laura is a great financial person, she would be an asset to the city, but we have people who work in finance on a job here in the city. They're paid to do that. And so, you know, to have that assistance would be great, but I don't think we need to, you know, just try to overrun the person who is in charge of the finances by somebody on the commission. But the asset of having somebody that understands, the accounting system understands, the budgeting and all of that stuff would be great to have. But it's not a thing that should be the necessity of our aim. And just moving on, we'll go for the commissioner wisdom. Parents can tell, but never teach unless they practice what they preach. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you, thank you. The issue on the Comcast cable, I talked to Patrick Lineberry, and apparently it's with Comcast is the only station that's having problems, and he will be addressing it with Comcast. We are, our station is really hooked with WOW, so he has to talk to them to find out what the issue is. So those of you who do have Comcast and you're having a difficult time, it is not our station, it is Comcast, and we're addressing it. So please be patient on that. Congratulations, Snowflake winners, and I want to thank the Beautification Commission, because if it wasn't for them and the committee, we wouldn't have the Snowflake Awards. So thank you so much for your work. The fireworks were fantastic, downtown was great. We spent a whole evening down there, I did see Commissioner Hill. Mickey, I want to thank her for all her hard work, and Steve Saaf, and the rest of the members of the DDA. The retailers who stayed open, I want to thank you, because, you know, everybody else is partying and you're staying open to help. So I want to thank the retailers for doing that. Great articles in the paper today, have already had phone calls, interest, so I'm really excited about what 2016 can bring for us. I am not going to comment on what was said from the audience, you know me, I mean, I, you know, I have broad shoulders, I get attacked all the time, so I'm just going to consider the source. And I do encourage everybody to run for the position. Thank you for applying and putting yourself out there. To Commissioner Crop, being new on this board, and her comments, I took those a little to heart, and they did bother me. And I hope that she will be as open-minded to get to know the people on this commission, and maybe once, knowing the people that are on the commission and knowing the issues we vote on, you may have a different perspective, and I hope so. But with that being said, you want to redo?
No, yeah. No, can you, can somebody, either Mickey or you, tell us about the raffle? We were up at Orleans, and I made all of my, the employees I work with buy raffle tickets, and I just wondered who won, and what the final draw was.
Mickey, if you want to... It was Emily.
Her name was Emily Casey.
Casey.
From Macomb. She's the customer at Orleans. The ticket was purchased at...
Probably that night I was there.
And she won...
$3,290.
Yeah, $3,234.
Excellent.
Is the dollar amount that she won, she was very excited.
And which establishment sold the most tickets?
Orleans.
Of course.
They were stellar. They had their entire staff, whether you cooked, whether you served, whether you do dishes, everyone was asked to sell $100 worth of tickets, and they did a great job. They sold over $2,000 worth of tickets for them.
Excellent.
Because without the businesses out there selling the tickets, we wouldn't be able to give a great profit.
Sure, we had 30 people up there, and I badgered most people to buy tickets.
It was a great night.
Okay. And with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
What is the opinion about Commissioner Blash?
You know, I re, I think he's doing fine, but I haven't spoken to him in a couple weeks. And we'll get an update, we'll have Gary give us an update at the next meeting. Thank you for asking.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.